Good morning. I would like to call the LRA meeting to order. I'm Captain Arnold, the LRA chairman. On behalf of myself, fellow commissioners, the mayor of the city of St. Louis, Comptroller's Office, the St. Louis Board of Education, Neil Richardson, Sheldon Anderson, and the employees of the LRA who work here. It is the job of the LRA to sell unutilized developed properties to residents and developers that have the financial ability and the expertise to redevelop such properties and to get them back to the tax roll. In a few moments, we will start our procedures listed on the agenda for today. If we have anyone that has signed up to speak on behalf of their offer, you will be given that chance. But please limit your presentations to no more than three minutes. Thank you. Please let me present. No more than three minutes, I said already, I'm sorry. May I have motions to approve the minutes from March the nineteenth to March twenty-sixth?
Second.
May I have a vote?
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Hearing no objections. Motion carries.
At this time, we would like to open the floor to meeting presenters. If you could, yeah, limit your comments to two minutes. If you can speak on behalf of your person, if you can say what number you are presenting to everyone else as well. So if we have a first presenter. On the first person with the sign, this is number seventeen. And then you can also reduce your question.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
I'm Dewayne Nelson, the owner of First Class Properties, also representing Workplace Dynasty. And we just wanted to inquire a lot for the purpose of, uh, important. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Next, Steve, thank you. And also, um, for item number thirty-seven. So these three, you have any questions? No, sir, I'm third, so here's my question. Okay, very serious. All right, thank you. So, um, for the early week, we got a lot of accounts, but I remember thirty-six. You have any questions? No questions? Okay, and also, um, on the defensive, item number twenty-three, if you got any questions. Number twenty-third, I'm grateful to have. Okay. No question. I want to be, but we're looking at the street, we have plenty, uh, um, if anyone can help us in any time of the year. So, um, we, Neil, my number? What's the number three? Fifty-two, thirty-four, well, okay. Thirty-eight. Thirty-eight. Final, thirty-eight, number thirty-eight. If you're having a question, you can add an offer. Okay, so the question is, have you been able to meet with, uh, the Academy Chairman or community?
Come on, everybody, my name is Lisa Gregory. Yes, several times, um. They were, um, weren't really, the first meeting didn't go so well. I haven't had a second meeting yet, and I've been going through this for a while. She did send me some resources to help me with the application. This is like an eight or nine or ten-page application. Uh, then I had, in order to even review the application, it said you have to have site plans, all this stuff. It cost me two thousand two thousand dollars just to get a site plan to give to them with my application. So this, I was spending money, and I don't even have a profit. I don't have a thing. So I'm wondering, how many the first do I get? And I asked her, she said it was, I'll be in the next, next upcoming meeting with them, so I don't know, I just want to know how many the first do I get? And that's pretty much it.
If you want to read, you got to see parts then. Okay. At this time, we will continue with our agenda and review the actions of offers to purchase. The first in this category under offers to purchase, uh, these are parcels that are owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground or physical structures. Those are single-family residence, side lots, two families, four families, et cetera. The offers have submitted offers to purchase with the intention of rehabbing properties as residential or commercial projects, an extension of their yard space, community gardens, or green spaces to enhance and beautify the community. The first category that we have is under the heading new construction. New construction under this program. These are class A lots with a minimum of four thousand square feet in total land with no more than three contiguous slots per offer. Um, we have offers one and two here. The first one being a duplicate offer that we are considering. The address is sixty-three twenty-three Alaska Avenue, presented by Salim. I'm sorry, Salim, Alaska, sorry, I'm so sorry. And then we have another offer, number two, sixty-three twenty-three Alaska, the same. Uh, and it's being presented by the Lutheran Development Group on. Um, offer number one, uh, from Salam, Alaska. Uh, we are reject, rejecting the offer, move to reject the offer in favor of another offer. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Uh, can we call for the vote? Please, Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown? Yes. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Uh, same address as we stated for this duplicate, uh, offer, sixty-three twenty-three Alaska, uh, presented by Lutheran Development Group Inc., move to accept, uh, this seventy-five, uh, move to accept offer of a twelve-month option uh, for seven thousand five hundred with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing, and letters of support from the community. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Uh, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, item number three, property address twenty-nine forty through forty-two Montgomery, presented by Gilbert Wayne. Move to defer meeting action on this offer pending community input and support prior to the commission making decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of Ask Is Rehab Program. The Ask Is Rehab Program, these are class A residential buildings up to six units, no more than one building with no more than two continuous lots or one commercial building. The first property we have in this category, item number four, property address thirty-eight twenty-six Page Avenue, presented by Latanya Fort. Uh, move to defer meeting action on this offer pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next offer, item number five, property address forty-one twenty-six Redbud Avenue, presented by Kevin Bramble. Um, move to reject offer due to insufficient proof of financial resources to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next item, uh, item number six, property address forty-three fifteen Metin, presented by Chalipa Brennan. Move to reject offer due to insufficient proof of financial resources to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number seven, property address fifty-fifty Emerson, Av- Emerson Avenue, uh, presented by Antoine Moore. Uh, move to defer meeting action on this parcel, uh, pending community input and support prior to the commission making decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number eight, property address one-seven fifty-six Ashland. Offer to meet the Hollands, move to reject offer due to insufficient proof of financial resources to support project. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number nine, property address forty-seventeen North Eleventh Street, presented by Alan Norwood. Move to defer meeting action on this offer pending community input and support prior to the commission making decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number ten, we have key properties, LLC care of Michael J. Smalley. Property address forty-two eleven East Cassup and forty-one oh-nine West Cassup. I move to defer meeting action on this offer pending community input and support prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number eleven, property, two property addresses, uh, forty-one fifteen West Penrose Street and forty-one seventeen West Penrose Street, presented by Kiara Renee Burton. Move to reject offer due to disposition of existing city-owned property. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of development, and we have no properties at this time in this category. Our next category is under the heading of the General Lot Purchase Program. Under this program, under the General Lot Purchase Program, we have guidelines for the sales of the LRA vacant lots, class A, any purpose other than new construction, building, rehab, or development. The first property we have in this category is item number twelve, property address forty-eight twenty-two North Twentieth Street, presented by Jamal R. Isaac and Pamela Saunders Isaac. Move to accept offer of seven hundred seventy-six dollars with no closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, item number thirteen, we have a property address nineteen fifteen Berry Street. And we have, uh, it's being presented by Tyler. Uh, I'm sorry, Tyler Davis. And we move to. Screen this. Sorry for the delay there. Um, we have an item number thirteen, we have nineteen fifteen Berry Street, uh, presented by Howard Davis. And, uh, we move to defer meeting action on, uh, parcel thirteen, uh, pending community input support prior to the commission making a decision. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, carries. Item number fourteen, we have property address fifty-seven thirty-two Page Boulevard, uh, getting on services LLC. Uh, move to defer any action on this parcel pending community supporting input prior to the commission making a decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number fifteen, property address is twenty-eight fifty-three O Sage. Uh, presented, offered by Beatrice Flores Gomez. Uh, move to counter offer with a purchase price of two thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number sixteen, property address is sixteen twenty-two Arlington Avenue. Offer, DeJuan Butler, move to accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number seventeen, property address four twenty-seven Bates Street, uh, presented by First Class Properties LLC care of Julian Nelson. Move to counter offer with a purchase price of four thousand sixty-two dollars with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number eighteen, property address fifty-nine fifty-nine Wabbeet Avenue, presented by Joel Reed. Move to reject the offer due to, uh, present use and highest use of the offer of the parcel. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number nineteen, property address twenty-six fifteen Lynch. Offer Kenan Share. Move to counter with a purchase price of five thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars with closing contingent upon budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty, twenty-two, I'm sorry, two-two-six South Jefferson Avenue. Move to accept offer of a thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
Uh, item number, uh, nothing. Yeah, I'm sorry, previous role, previous role, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, item number twenty-one, we have eighty-seven eighty-seven North Broadway. Move to defer any action on offer pending many input and support prior to the commission making decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-two, we have eighty-three fifty-seven North Broadway Street. Uh, offer Cooley M. Moore. Uh, move to counter offer with a purchase price of six thousand six hundred and thirty-one dollars with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of side lot programs, and we do not have any authors for side lots. Uh, our next category is under the heading of option renewal. Option renewals are authors' requests for additional time to complete projects due to construction delays, funding, et cetera, on options that are near expiration. Offers must supply proof of consistent progress to receive renewals for options and extensions of time. The first property that we have in this category is under the heading, um, the property address is thirty-five oh-six Morgan Ford Road. Uh, and that's being presented by Tower Road CDC. Move to accept, uh, an option, twelve-month option of fifteen thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars, um, with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-four, property, multiple addresses here, twenty-four twenty-one North Taylor Avenue and forty-two oh-nine Garfield Avenue, presented by Northside Community Housing. Uh, DBA NCH Holdings LLC care of Michael Burns. Move to accept option, twenty-four-month option of five thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget, and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Our next property heading is under the, uh, heading of NS, at this time, I know NS offers. Our next category is under the heading of donation. Donations are parcels which consist of unoccupied ground or structures owned by constituents who desire to donate due to no longer wanting the property or they are incapable of maintaining the upkeep. The donation is entered, uh, is entered into the LRA inventory, and so using the LRA process. The first property and only property we have in this category, item number twenty-five, five thousand North Kings Highway, offer Lauren Browning. And I move that we accept the donation. Um, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of miscellaneous. Miscellaneous items are requested changes from the original approved board decision. These may include a change of end use, name change, et cetera. The request must go before the board for consideration. The first property we have in this category, item number twenty-six. Uh, we have multiple properties presented in exhibit A, presented by the Revitalization of Baton Association logo, uh, care of Tashar Earl. Uh, I move that we counter, uh, this offer with a purchase price of two thousand going to the Appointing Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as the vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number twenty-seven, property address thirty-four fourteen through thirty-four sixteen North Fourteenth Street, presented by Dante Dave Barbie. And move to, uh, I'd like to move to counter, uh, offer for a purchase price of two thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of deferral. We have, uh, multiple items in this category. Um, item number twenty-eight. We have fifty-two forty-five Ashland Avenue, uh, presented by Darius Al Lattimore. Move to reject offer due to lack of community support. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as the vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number twenty-nine, property address. Item number twenty-nine, property address eighty-seven thirty-one River View Drive. Offered by Kenan L. Buchanan. Move to counter offer with a purchase price of three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirty. We have property address fourteen sixty-four Holdam. Offered by Joseph K. Virgin. Move to reject offer due to lack of community support, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number thirty-one, uh, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offer Anthony K. Tw- Twitty. And we move to, uh, I would like to, uh, make motion that we counter the offer. Uh, for five thousand two hundred and two dollars. With closing contention upon approval of plans, budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number thirty-two, property address forty-seven thirty-four Newberry Terrace. Offered by Brandon A. Harris, move to accept. A twenty-four month option, three thousand dollars. With closing contention upon approval of plans, budget and financing. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number thirty-three, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Offered by Aladi Close. I move to counter this offer with a purchase price of eleven thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirty-four. We have property address eighty-seven eighty-seven North Broadway. Uh, presented by, uh, Buchanan Foundation. Uh, move to reject offer due to lack of community support project. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number thirty-five. Um, we have property address thirty-three forty Clara Avenue. Uh, presented by Sharonda Wilkins. Move to defer any action on this parcel pending the input and support. Prior to the commission making any decision. Item number thirty-six. Uh, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Uh, our offer is urban lead of Metropolitan St. Louis care of Michael Holmes. I move that we accept, uh, an offer for a twenty-four month option. Of fifty-four thousand nine hundred with closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role as a vote.
Second.
Second, it's been moved in second, previous roles, vote hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, item number thirty-seven. Item number thirty-seven, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Uh, offered by Gateway Housing First care of Cynthia, uh, Duffy. Uh, I move to accept, uh, one option. Uh, at a amount of fifty-seven thousand three hundred and two dollars. With closing contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Okay, uh, we have item number thirty-eight. Property address is fifty-two thirty-four Wells Avenue, a heart full of love in home health care. Uh, move to accept offer. Are actually, would I to? Uh. Item number thirty-eight, uh, property address fifty-two thirty-four. Uh, Wells Avenue, uh, I'd like to move to counter offer. Um, at sixty-six hundred with, uh. Counter offer, uh, for six hundred. With this offer being contingent upon approval of plans, budget and financing, do I have a second?
Second.
It's removed in second. Okay, sixty-six, sixty-six, okay. Six-six-six-six-six, okay, all right, all right. So we'll do two-thirds, which would be sixty-six, sixty-six, okay. Uh, two-thirds of the appraised amount, okay. Um, so with that, it's second. And it's moved to second, previous role as a vote, and offer is six-six-six-six, okay. Hearing no objections, motion carries, okay. Um, we have item number thirty-nine. Uh, we have multiple properties in here and for item number thirty-nine, sixty-fourty-eight Maple Avenue. Sixty-fifty-two Maple Avenue and sixty-fifty-four Maple Avenue. Looking at this, uh, we move to, uh, reject the offer due to insufficient proof. Financial resources to support the project, you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty. We have multiple properties listed on exhibit A, presented by Rodney and Emily Johnson. Move to reject offer due to lack of community input and support for the project. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, item number forty-one, property address, multiple properties, forty-two fifty-three Gano Avenue. Forty-two forty-seven Gano Avenue care of ninety-six months development LLC care of Derek. Wants move to reject offer due to lack of community support and lack of financial. Resources to support project, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-two, property address thirty-two fifty-six North Nineteenth Street. Offer Jen- Jenzel E. Pepper move to. Uh, reject offer due to, uh, insufficient proof of financial resources to support. The project, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-three, fifty-one oh-six Northland. Offer Gerald D. Tyson move to reject offer due to insufficient proof. Of financial resources to support project, do I have a second?
Second.
So moved to second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number forty-four, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. The offer of Lynn Lee Ben Foundation, Willa Ben. Uh, foundation care of James P. Willa Ben. Uh, move to defer any action on these parcels pending community input support. Prior to the commission making the decision. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-five. Uh, we have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Um. We have multiple properties listed in exhibit A. Uh, move to defer any action on this parcel, on these parcels pending community input support. Or I see the commission making any decision.
Second.
This been moved in second. Previous role is to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-six, we have forty-three thirty North Houston Avenue, First Rate Care Inc. Um. We have, uh, I'd like to have a motion to defer any action on this. Offer, uh, pending community input support prior to commission making decision, do I have a second?
Second.
It was in second, previous roles to vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Uh, item. Item number forty-seven. Uh, item number, uh, forty-seven. Uh, item number forty-seven HQK Logistics LLC, um. Like to have a motion to defer any action on this part, these parcels pending community inputs for the private commission making decision.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number forty-eight, uh, property address forty-seven thirty-two New Complex. Uh, offer Jasmine Marie Noble, uh, move to reject offer. Due to lack of community engagement, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is vote, hearing no objections, motion carries. Item number forty-nine, we have property address fifty-seven eleven Maple Avenue. Presented by Ideal Enterprise Investments LLC, care of Amber Simmons. Move to defer any action on this parcel pending community input. Prior to the commission making decision, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number fifty. We have multiple properties listed in exhibit A, offered by Demetrius Jones. Move to reject offer due to lack of community support, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role as a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Uh, item number fifty-one, we have property address thirty-eight hundred Co-Brittian. And thirty-eight oh-one Al dine Avenue. Move to reject offer due to lack of community engagement, do I have a second?
Second.
So moved in second, previous roles, vote hearing no objections, motion carries. That includes our officers commissioner. And we have, uh, some resolutions to be presented. And I would just like to turn this over to Sheldon to speak on the, uh. Uh, various resolutions.
Yes, uh, so good morning commissioners and everyone attending. Uh, the first resolution that has been presented is resolution number twenty-four dash L R eight dash zero eight-three. That is a resolution to adopt a sales policy for stabilized buildings and redesign its sales policy for proposition. And as program stabilization properties, uh, and so to really give you some context. Uh, L R eight had been the actual, uh, staffing and S O B C staffs. The actual property business program, that program has been underway for several years. Uh, and in addition to the profit and stabilization program. The mayor authorized the executive order number seventy-six. And that executive order number seventy-six that supported the stable communities S C O pilot program. So that pilot program essentially is for stabilization of vacant private properties, uh, that is funded publicly. And we wanted to draw some distinction between both of the programs. Uh, and also set some actual policies within both of the programs. Uh, whereby the actual state of the community S C O pilot program and those homes that are stabilized that are privately. Uh, have to have a separate sales policy because they are private, uh, properties. And so with that, this resolution simply authorizes the L R eight to actually accept. The stable community S C O, uh, pilot program properties into its inventory. And actually sell it via the resolution and the services that are attached, uh, in the resolution. And so the sales policy is simply put in exhibit C to resolution four L R eight dash zero zero three. Will allow the way to be adopted as the proposition and a stabilization building sales policy. And then all properties that are classified as class C properties, uh, pursuant to resolution four L R eight dash zero two-three. Are going to be reclassified as class A properties, uh, following in an actual appraisal process. And so it is a recommendation of, uh, of staff that need forward, uh, as a recommendation to L. To adopt this resolution, uh, thereby establishing a new sales policy for both propertyness. And properties that are received as part of the state of the community S C O.
Thank you. With that information, I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Resolution number twenty-four L R eight zero eight-three, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, um, maybe call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Arnold?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes. Hearing no opposition, motion carries. Our next resolution we have is resolution number zero eight-two. If you could speak to that.
Yes, uh, absolutely, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, so resolution number twenty-four L R eight dash zero eight-two. Is a resolution authorizing L R eight enter into service previous for lawn maintenance and the root of services. And so as you're aware commissioners, uh, L R eight commenced its beautification program several months ago. Uh, at the beginning of that program, uh, we simply viewed our the responses for contractors. Uh, and onboarded one contractor of which the prior resolution actually authorized. L R eight to commence with, uh, three contractors at that time. Uh, that was given the selection committee's decision and recommendation to the commission, which was accepted. Uh, and so this resolution simply put allows L R eight to further onboard additional contractors. Uh, where it actually submitted a new R P to the contracting community. Uh, L R eight actually convinced a selection committee, uh, that committee was, uh, included with not just L R eight staff. But also staff with an S O B C and several other development bodies that are staffed by L S O B C. Uh, and so as the recommendation of this selection committee, L R eight is recommended to the commission. Uh, to be enabled to onboard additional contractors. And each contract would simply be in a total amount that would not exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per contract. Which is similar to the prior resolution that was adopted in the last cycle. Uh, and also that we would simply. Uh, and also that we would simply onboard and have the ability to enter into contracts. With the contractors that are named in exhibit A. Uh, and so those contractors are Brown and Home Landscaping LLC. Innovative Cleaning and Labor Services LLC. MACC Contract Incorporated Preferred Landscaping Companies LLC. St. Louis Association of Committee Organizations and SCL Homes HBS LLC. Uh, that is because the LRA commission received nine uh, qualified respondents. And of the nine, uh, the selection committee convinced a scoring mechanism. Uh, where we simply reviewed qualifications and the responses that were provided by the contractors. And of the nine to six that are demonstrated that we recommend forward with that to contracts. Uh, those being of the highest scoring and inserting the highest level capacity to move forward with executing the program. And so the recommendation also includes that in exhibit B, the contracts themselves. Would be up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per contract. Based on the contractors uh, scoring and the pricing uh, that is presented in exhibit B per individual contract. So this is the recommendation of being from LRA uh, to the commission. To move forward with the ability to authorize contracts, to move forward the work, uh, that suddenly aligns. Not just with LRA communication, uh, but the build a block approach, block by block approach. That LRA is taking and not just doing the proof, uh, but also the addition and stabilization and other activities for development.
Okay, thank you, Director.
And with that information. I move that we uh, approve and accept resolution number twenty four LRA zero eight two, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role is a vote, hearing no objection, motion carries. Uh, that concludes our resolutions. You know, I was trying to go back to your commissioner.
Let me direct this report. Uh, Commissioner Arnold, there is no additional course, so thank you. Our next commission meeting will be scheduled for May twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four. I'm sorry, it's May twenty ninth, I'm sorry. Meeting is adjourned.